All right, good afternoon, everybody. Good night, this call is beginning toward the six thirty Wednesday, March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Deputy Clerk Reese, could you please give us the roll call?
Alan? Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaiken? Otkin?
Here.
Lawrence? Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Berdine?
Here.
Fredo?
Here.
Swor?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Or?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you're able, stand for the pleasure. I am.
I am a little lady, and I am a United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First, we will have the agenda that the council, their council president.
First, I would like to offer Councilmembers Lawrence and Gaiken, as well as Councilmember.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad. What calls? Passes.
And my motion to approach an exit.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? You know, all day.
Aye.
opposed. Passes. Presentations. Community recognition with Director Scott. Director, that's both Scott.
Our guest changed. So one of the things that we were trying to do this year is to start talking positively about Aberdeen. We get a lot of negative, if you read any comments, you see a lot of negative. There's so many good things happening in our community that we wanted to start paying recognition to that. Because if we start talking better about ourselves, other people will start talking better about that, too. So one of the things we wanted to do this year was recognize people who are making an impact in our community. So we hope to present four of these awards this year, and our first one we're presenting. And I'm going to let Josh introduce them, but I want to read the plaque. But presented to Gray Acres in recognition of the hard work, dedication, and passion for our community and for the continued commitment to the redevelopment of Aberdeen. And Josh, you want to say a little bit about what they've done?
So this particular company they've done, which I'm sure you guys have seen, two twelve East Wishco, which is the nice blue painted building as you're driving through town. It's got the giant antique black wall sign on it. That's sixteen newly remodeled apartments. They did the brand new duplexes on Marion Street. The Throwback Threads Building, which used to be a tattoo parlor downtown Aberdeen as well. They just took over the Gray's Apartments and are actually currently putting in the brand new fire escape in the rear of the building that has been not to code for twenty-plus years. They've got several other projects that they're going to be working on as well. I believe that Thunderbird is coming up really soon. That's pretty much it for now. I'm going to have Julie Rajic, who's going to accept the award for Gray Acres LSU, come up.
First of all, I'm actually part of a team. They cannot be here tonight, some of them are a little shy, don't like recognition. But I wanted to say thank you on behalf of them and myself. It's nice to know that our efforts haven't gone unrecognized. I have been investing in property in Aberdeen, Hoquam, Monaseno, and Cosmopolis since about twenty sixteen. And hopefully we'll continue moving forward. As Josh mentioned, our current focus right now is working on the two hundred block of East Wishco Street. We're really motivated to clean up that part of town because it's, a lot of people kind of refer to it as the scary block. So we kind of want to change that. And as he mentioned, the sign with the antiques, or the building with the antique sign that has, it's actually eighteen units. And they're almost all fully rented. We've been focusing on renting to working professionals. And we have several younger people there that are very excited to live downtown and be part of a walkable community. The the Gray's Apartments. We were excited to take those over. And we're slowly cleaning it up, and it was in much worse condition inside than we realized. And so we've been working with the tenants to get them moved out into new homes that are safe and healthy. We're going to have to do a lot of work there to kind of bring the standards up to create a safe and happy living environment. And we've installed a new fire escape. And so that's going to be a work in progress for a while. The old fantasy fantasy shop building, we're actually getting ready to demolish that due to the condition, and we have some ideas we're toying with there to do something fun with that piece of property. Undecided at the moment. And then we've also been talking with the owner of the Old Book Carnival building, I don't know the official name of that building, but we're hoping to work with him to either repurpose that building or reopen it. I think the owner really would like to reopen it as the Book Carnival again, so. And then, of course, the Thunderbird Hotel. It's been a project for years that we've dreamed of turning into a boutique hotel kind of a destination. We've hit some roadblocks along the way, so it's taken much longer than we ever wanted. But it is coming eventually. And then most of all, I want to thank Josh. We have definitely noticed once you've come on board that it's been a much smoother, easier process working with the city. And we really appreciate it. I think some of our projects are definitely a lot further along because of your assistance and kind of cheering us on. So we can tell that you're really trying to do what you can to improve Aberdeen, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
That was wonderful, thank you. You guys are doing a great job, and everybody's noticing all the work you guys are doing. It's really paying off. Next, we have Aberdeen School District with Tracy Samstrom and Lynn Green.
We have a PowerPoint. Well, thank you for having us this evening. I'm Tracy Samstrom. I'm one of the co-superintendents of the Aberdeen School District, as well as the Director of Teaching, Learning, and Technology.
And my name is Lynn Green. I'm the other co-superintendent and the Director of our Career and Technical Programs and our Brand Skills Center in the school district.
So we are here tonight to share with you a very exciting opportunity that we have and are working through. And we have a PowerPoint up here. And going to share with you about our seismic safety program and the grant that we received for the Aberdeen School District. And we really want to precursor this with, you probably have questions that we don't have answers to yet, but we'll be happy to write those down and get you the answers at a later date because this is a lot. We started in these positions last spring. And during that time, they said, oh, yeah, and here's the seismic safety grant that you all are going to be in charge of. And we're going to build four new schools, so here you go. So we were awarded the grant, and there's five districts around the area that have received the grant. You've probably heard of Hoquam building some new schools and some others around the area. In Aberdeen, they came out and they looked at all of our buildings in the district. And every one of our buildings qualify for this funding except for Aberdeen High School, and that's because it's too new. And unfortunately, preschool, they don't generate any funding because it's a K-12 program. This is a unique opportunity and so exciting for us because we're going to be able to build four new schools with little to no taxpayer dollars. So how the the funding works is typically you would run a bond to build a new school. And if you pass that bond, then you get that money from your taxpayers. And then the state kicks in what we call SCAP dollars, and so it's matching dollars. And so you have your funding for a whole school. Well, they're allowing us to use the seismic dollars that they're awarding to us. And then they're still putting that SCAP dollars towards those buildings. And so it's, it'll be little to no taxpayer dollars. So we keep pinching ourselves all the time and thinking, is this, is this real? Some things that we have to think about, we have shrinking enrollment. And so when we go to build these new schools, we have to think about how are they funded? Square footage and enrollment? And how, how do we best use those dollars and maximize those? We have some smaller elementary schools, so it could mean that we reduce by one elementary school and consolidate a little bit, and that'll, that'll save us some, some dollars in the end as well. So we're looking at doing that, consolidating and, and bringing it down to four elementaries instead of five. In the future, we'll build these schools, and then we'll have these properties that are vacant. And one of the questions we get asked frequently is, then what? What do you do with the properties? Well, sky's the limit. You know, we could sell those and maybe use some of the dollars to put towards some sports facilities for the district. Or we could repurpose them and use them for a preschool program, say. So there's all kinds of different ways, and we're not far enough down the road that we've thought of that. But it's, it's on the back burner. How the projects actually work are, there are four phases. And the first phase, and we've already gone through this phase, is you receive the grant. And they go out and do all the geotechnical work. And we're really looking at schools that are in the inundation zone, and we don't want them to be. And then we're looking at the ground and how they can survive a seismic event. And so based on those things, then they decide, okay, does that school need to be redone? Or can we build a new school? So four of our schools qualify as a rebuild. And in order to do that, we really needed to look at land that's outside the inundation zone. And here in Aberdeen, there's not a ton of land. And so we have been working with a private citizen to acquire some land. And Lynn will show you that in a little while to build two of our schools up on Bossage Boulevard, Miller, and one of our elementary schools. And then also keeping a South Side Elementary School for the folks that have kids on that side of the bridge. So the committee does all that work. They tell us, yes, this building, we can remodel and beef it up, and it'll withstand a seismic event. It's out of the inundation zone, or no, we will fund a new school, but you need to find land out of the inundation zone. And so then the phase two, once we figure out that, is going to the conceptual design. And that's where we are currently with most of our buildings. And that's when you go through the ed spec. So it's fun to brainstorm and talk with our architectural company and talk about what we want to see in a new school and how that could look. We get input from teachers and administrators. And we have committees that kind of oversee that. We go on site visits to look at the different schools to see if there are things we want to incorporate while still ma- making sure that our schools look cohesive, too. And so then phase three, we move into the design phase. And that's where you really start picking things out. You pick out the flooring, you pick out the siding, and you talk about roofs and windows and things we don't know a lot about. And so we're, we're learning. And the idea is you want to get shovel-ready with all of your projects because the way the funding works is they allocate dollars every biennium. And then the schools that are in this grant, they, you get shovel-ready, and then you get in line. And so they take that, that money and they hand it out until it's gone in order of shovel-ready schools. And then you have to wait until the next biennium when they re-up, and then they start handing that money out again. So we have been really working hard to get to the point of shovel-ready so that we have a good opportunity to receive those funds as soon as possible. Want to talk about the next?
So just to let you know exactly where we are with respect to each school, especially the new construction or relocation buildings. So Harbor Learning Center is really our first project that will be constructed. It is first in our, our timeline and our cycle for building for a few reasons, but a primary one is that we're moving the Harbor Learning Center, which historically, some of you might know that as Harbor High School, but it's become an umbrella school for even more programs, and that's why it's called Harbor Learning Center. We're moving that very close to Aberdeen High School. And, and we owned that property already in the district. And so once the testing was done on the, on the land itself, we were able to move forward. So that will be the first building actually constructed. So we've been, we've done some school tours with that staff. We've been in the ed spec process with our architects and construction team. And I expect that we'll go into schematic design by late spring or early summer. So that's where we are with that project. I, I do want to bring up, I'm sorry that Adon isn't here tonight. And thank you, by the way, for having a student representative from our district on the council. He is great about emailing Tracy and I when something comes up here and he has a question. He follows up, so I just want to make sure you know that. And he talked to us about the Beech Tree that apparently came up during a meeting. So I just want to assure you that the next day, we had a design team meeting, a, a construction team meeting. And we brought that up, and so they've kind of looked at our plans and the layout, and it appears that it wouldn't be impacted with our new construction. So at this time, that's what I have to report about the Beech Tree, just as a follow-up from Adon, so. He is on teams with us now. Oh, he is, oh, good. So thank you, Adon, for sharing that with us. It helped us to do some follow-up there. Miller Junior High School would be, again, placed up on the Bossage Boulevard property. And so we are in a process now for that school. And like Tracy said, what, what says here, the New Aberdeen Elementary School North, it's kind of where we're identifying them now, and it's in case of that consolidation of properties, what does that naming look like? So for right now, you're going to hear us talk about North and South. And we are in purchase and sale agreements for property for those two schools and for the South Side property as well. And basically, there, we're in a process where they're contingent upon all of the environmental studies coming back favorably for us to build schools. So we've signed agreements and intent to purchase those properties, but there has not been an actual purchase that has gone through on either site until all of that testing is, is completed and we receive a final report. So that's in process right now. And so that's what's happening with property procurement for all three of those other sites. But we are moving into phase two with our elementary schools. And so they'll start those site visits and the ed specs in the month of April. So they'll be right behind Harbor Learning Center in that process, and Miller will be right behind that. So we're, we're kind of boom, 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 one after the other. Right now, we're looking at the two elementary schools coming together with representatives from, we're actually bringing representatives from three of our elementary schools, again, because of that consolidation discussion that Tracy shared. And so they'll work all together to start. And then as we need to individualize the North and South building, then that group will break up into smaller groups to focus on that. So we just wanted to, in case anybody needed the visual, because this really helped us at one point, too, can we just look at the parcels on, online here? So this happens to be the, the North Aberdeen site. This site has, as you'll see there, a little over ninety-five acres that we would be looking to acquire. And the intent would be that Miller Junior High would be on the upper right side of what you're looking at here. And, and the elementary school would be just to the left of that. So that's how that would lay out preliminarily as we've designed the, the schematic there. And so there's also potential for us to, Tracy mentioned the possibility of some athletic facilities and things. You may know that our current Miller Junior High houses our track. And that's the track that even the high school uses for track. So it may be that we certainly need to relocate some of those spaces. And so there would be plenty of room in that acreage to be able to do some of that. And the next one, this is the South Aberdeen site. So this is made up of a few different parcels. And it, it really, just for, I, I don't know how familiar you are in looking at, you know, pictures like this or drawings like this, many of you may be, but it, we're basically bordering up on the, the south side there of that lower piece of property that's outlined. The larger one is really right up against the border of Cosmopolis. That's, that's where that particular site is. And again, Tracy mentioned there is not a lot of property in the city of Aberdeen to purchase out of the inundation zone big enough to house schools. And so this is one, and our board was committed to keeping an elementary school on the south side of Aberdeen. And so this is the property that we're looking at. It is the south portion that we would be looking at for construction. So it's, it's more elevated. The other parcel that you see up above that, that falls down and is a, is lower than that upper portion. But, and then you'll see two parcels off to the left that would also be part of this acquisition.
What street is that that goes through?
Lomax is the one on the very south part of that, Lomax Street.
That would be fake, yeah.
Yes. Correct. And I will say, I know that our, we feel really good about our project team, our architects and our construction managers and folks that are working with us. I know that they've been working with folks from the city of Aberdeen, I think, from early on. And so they, they're very familiar with parking codes and all kinds of things that Tracy and I, we're not familiar with those things, but we're becoming more familiar with some of those things. And so I know that they've been meeting with various departments and folks on some of those requirements that need to be taken into consideration to prepare these sites and then also for school construction. And then our last slide just shows the whole scope and timeline of this particular project. So that last year, this is very hard to read, so I'll try to just decipher for you. But you'll see that it starts back in twenty twenty-four. And then the last year that you'll see out to the right is twenty thirty-three. So we're not talking about an overnight process here. We're looking at about eight years out before all of those projects would be complete. And that comes back to being dependent on state funding, that you'll see at the top, and, and how that is rolled out. But ideally, if things went according to plan and to schedule, you'll see that construction, and that's where it has the yellow bar or yellow-orange bars, that first one that you'll see in the timeline that is slated to start in twenty twenty-six would be Harbor Learning Center. And then the next one that you'll see just below it is Stevens Elementary. And then the one just above that, just going in timeline order, is Miller Junior High. Some of this is subject to change, depending, again, on the property acquisition and final environmental studies and some of those pieces. But those would be the three projects slated earlier rather than later. And then what you'll see towards the end, when you get out to twenty thirty and beyond, that would be AJ West or the, actually, the North Elementary Site. And then also the retrofitting that we are qualified for, for our other elementary buildings that aren't being replaced. So Central Park, Robert Gray, and McDermath did all qualify for retrofitting. But again, we may not be using all five schools by the time we get to the, you know, implementation of all of this construction. So, so that's just tentative timeline. All of the bars with the purple color, that's all the design phase. Just because, again, I think it's hard to see that piece. So this is just, we wanted to keep you updated, and we're happy to also come back at any time throughout this process and update you because they, we're updated every week, and there's things that change all the time. Not that we need to be here every week. But, you know, if in a year or whenever you want us to come back and say, what's happening now with the school projects? We're, we're happy to do that. So we would be open to any questions that you might have. And like we said, we may not be able to answer them, but we will get answers. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and for following up with, with us about the Beech Tree. That's lovely to hear. I'm curious to know if at this stage in the planning, does it look like the school district will need to provide new infrastructure, whether it's streets or utility access to any of these new sites? And is there a role for the city to partner with that part of the project?
I would say that's a bit of what our construction team has already been reaching out to the city about and finding out. I, I know with the Lomax Street property, with that South Side property, there have been discussions about fire access and different types of access for emergency services and purposes and things like that. And so early conversations about that, how, how deep those plans go in terms of what we'll need to do, we're not, we're not at that stage yet. But certainly, those, those conversations are already happening with folks from the city of Aberdeen and the various departments.
I guess I would, I would, on my wish list would be that the grant funds can help pay for some of that needed infrastructure.
And I know that, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I know that we'll be looking at traffic patterns and parking and sidewalks. We have to have sidewalks for kids to walk to school, so all of those things will be considered. But we also know that there's a lot more that needs to be considered. And when we have more of that information and how those things will be dealt with, then we can come and update you as well.
Any other questions for us? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for allowing us to come and share with you. We're pretty excited.
All right, thank you, ladies. Now we have, let's see here, award for candidates, discussion, discussion and questions. So we'll now invite our five candidates to come up to the table. I would see, well, you can't look at the names. We'll just, if you get them right, we'll give you ten points. You're doing good so far. Everybody already knew where they were.
That could hold us.
So each of the candidates will have five minutes to address the council regarding their interests in their ward board position. Then the council will be allotted time to ask questions if they have any. And then we'll vote, and it will be the top two highest vote winners will move forward. And then we'll vote again. Oh, they weren't right, okay. I don't have that on mine. Is that, do we go to executive? Okay, we're going to talk about you guys for a minute. So it looks like fifteen, oh, that would be council president, Swor.
Well, first, we're going to start with their five minutes each.
And then we're going to go, okay, sorry, I don't have this down. Okay, so we're going to go with Nora Fleming first. And I was told that it was a random order and had something to do with the way you guys submitted earlier timing. So it wasn't anybody's getting us better timing or anything. So we'll start with Norman, you have five minutes.
So if you push the little head on your microphone.
There you go.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Norma Fleming. I retired a few years ago and moved to Aberdeen to be near my youngest grandson. So I don't have any work or personal obligations that would interfere with my work with the city if you were to elect me as a city council member. Prior to moving to Aberdeen, I was on the board of equalization in Pierce County. That is a quasi judicial board that hears petitions and rules on the petitions that are brought by your property owners seeking adjustment of their property taxes. So some of the things that I, I learned on the board might be useful for city council. For many years, I was a paralegal. For many years, I was a paralegal. My first job as a paralegal was with an attorney who had a litigation and uh commercial real estate practice, as well as being the city attorney and attorney for the port in Brookings, Oregon. So that was my first exposure to city government. I was there for several years, and then I moved to Washington and uh worked in law firms in Seattle and Bellevue, as well as having a a paralegal business of my own, which, while not pro bono, was still very affordable. The main reason I had that business was so that people could have access to the legal system that might not otherwise be able to afford it. When I was in grammar school, my mother made me run the class office every year, which, of course, I did. She was the only woman on the school board, so I think she was trying to prime me. So I was raised on Robert's Rules of Order, which, of course, would be useful for city council. The role of city council is vast, but mainly to provide for the smooth running of government and provide for the safety and enjoyment of its citizens and its vacationers. And speaking of vacation, I was in New Orleans when Katrina was on the horizon, and we were all evacuated, and I was lucky enough to get the fourth of the last rental vehicle available and drive us out of there. So I was exposed to some disaster evacuation, which might be useful for Aberdeen. Hope not. Another project I'm interested in is the Levy Project and any beautification projects that might extend beyond that. I I believe Aberdeen could be a destination location, not just a pass through to the ocean beaches. I love it here, and I'd be honored to serve it in any way I can. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh do we want to wait on questions until they've all, okay? So then then when we get to the questions, it'll be each person will, each council can ask a question, but not ask another question until another council person, till everybody's had a chance to ask a question. All right. Uh next, we'll go to Tara Merritt.
Would it be all right if I stood podium to speak? Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. Feel a little bit better on my feet. Sorry. I usually just speak off the cuff, but I feel like five minutes is a very short amount of time to cover all the things that um I wanted to cover tonight. So I might be a familiar face to most of you. I've run for city council twice in the city of Aberdeen. Uh my name is Tara Merritt. Um I've lived here for sixteen years, almost the summer in Ward Four. My desire to serve on the city council is guided by a strong sense of importance for the um principled governance in the city and a dedication to the position um if I am elected, is driven by a love I have for the people who live here. I care about the future of the city of Aberdeen and the work we do on the council. Um is laying the stepping stones for the future of our city. We um have a beautiful city, and it needs to be preserved and promoted and development encouraged. As a mother of six children, this is something I think about every day as I drive around town and observe our city. What will it be like in twenty years? Will it be a place that our children stay? Will it be a place that they come home to after they go to college and start raising children of their own and having their families? The decisions that the council makes affect not only our citizens, but the businesses here and the community at large. Um we have a duty to be available and respond promptly to our citizens through phone calls, emails, and meetings, and to be attentive liaisons and listeners. The city council votes on and amends the city charter to expand or limit government power within the city. As a counselor, we need patience to work through issues as we draft and review policy and listen to concerns, understanding the needs of our area geographically and demographically is also important. This helps as we create laws to keep our town safe, secure, and prosperous. As far as being qualified for the for the position, I am over eighteen years old. I am a U S citizen and a registered voter in Ward Four, and I have lived here longer than one year. Um I have a clean legal record and no conflict of interest and no personal or political agendas. If appointed, I would have to resign from the Civil Service Commission as a citizen representative, but I would be happy to serve as the councilperson on that committee, and would also be interested in serving on the Public Safety Committee. I ran for Ward Four, Position Eight, in twenty nineteen. Um when Margot Short was retiring from her years of service on the city council, I received two hundred and twenty-three votes in the twenty twenty general election against Seba Ross, and nearly forty-two percent of the vote. The election process was a great opportunity to get to know um many people throughout my ward in the city and city leadership to understand the problems we were facing. I spent time on doorsteps, sidewalks, downtown at city council meetings and holding uh meetings with people within the city that were really concerned about the issues that were happening at the time. We had people that were struggling with drug addiction, homelessness, um a camp that was growing in several different areas, and um I sought out Chief Schumate and Chief Hubbard at the time and met with them and asked them what's going on, what can we do, what laws do we have that are hindering your ability to deal with these issues, and really learned a lot from them. It wasn't just them that I met with and got to know. At the time, other people that still work for our city that are sitting here behind me today were very gracious to meet with me and talk with me and help me understand those issues, and I feel that would be an asset still today if I was elected or voted upon tonight to sit here with you at this table. We have a population of about seventeen thousand people, and twenty-two percent or roughly one in five people live in poverty in the city of Aberdeen. The median household income is fifty-two thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars, or it was as of twenty twenty-three. We are making choices that affect everyone in our city, and we need to be mindful of that as we make policy. Um since then, we've paced faced the pandemic that shut down school, and I served on the task force to draft and implement a plan to reopen school in person in Aberdeen School District. Was appointed to serve on the Aberdeen Civil Service Commission and will have served for almost three years now, this coming May on my birthday. I completed the Citizens Academy in the winter of twenty twenty-three, and I volunteered with the family promise of Grace Harbor. I served um for almost ten years on the Seventh Street Kid Kids Board, so I'm a dedicated servant. I only resigned because I was running for city council at that time and felt like I couldn't do both, but I still do volunteer every summer with that program. When I was in college, I worked for this um Franklin Covey Corporation and was fortunate enough to receive training with them, and I'm running out of time. I knew there would be more to that I wanna say that I'd have time for, but I was trained and learned principles that I still use in my life with them today, and one of those is finding win-win solutions. And that's something that we have to do as council members. Um whether we agree politically or not, we have to come to consensus, and we have to find peaceful resolution with one another as we seek to find solutions for our city. And so if I'm fortunate enough to be able to join you, I hope that we can do that together. And so I ask for your vote tonight, as we meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Hubbard.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Hubbard, and I have lived in Grace Harbor most of my life. Uh I wanna start by thanking you guys for the opportunity to type in this thing.
Carrie, can you pull the microphone?
Does that matter?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Uh I've never held an office before. I'm not a fan of the spotlight. I've always been the behind the scenes worker bee kind of person. But it's become pretty clear to me that if I wanna be more effective for my community, city council is a really good place to do that. And so when I became aware of that, I thought, this this is my chance. Uh I have worked for Harbor Architects for over twenty-five years, and in that time, we have done quite a few projects for the city of Aberdeen. Uh that has let me um understand how the city works and a lot of the challenges that the city faces. I also have to be very transparent that we actively pursue contracts with the city. We do currently have a contract with the city where we're in the design phase. So if that ever comes up where it's a conflict of interest, I would be transparent about that and recuse myself for any votes or discussions or anything that might come up. Uh outside of the office, I volunteer for a few different organizations. I serve on boards and committees. I have led the local chapter of an international nonprofit. I've organized events for anywhere from a hundred to a thousand people, and all of those things have taught me that collaboration really is key. I also just recently joined the Downtown Aberdeen Association Design and Economic Vitality Committee, and I'm still learning how to say that. Uh and I've been really excited about the conversations we've been having about revitalizing our downtown wards. It's very exciting. So why me? Why the city council? Simply put, I just feel like I can be effective. I'm organized, I'm hardworking, I'm results-driven, I understand budgets, contracts, administrative processes, all that admin stuff. That's what I've been doing for twenty-five years. Um I also really believe in listening. I think that true leadership starts with understanding, and we need to work with the people around us. We need to listen to the people who have issues for our council, and we need to work together to find solutions. I know that um the city has a lot of challenges. And it was kind of hard for me to choose three to focus on, because there's a lot of really cool things. Um but the three, I think, for me, the top priorities, uh homelessness is is an issue. We've made great strides, but we have more we can do. Uh the downtown revitalization is is huge for me. I've seen other communities that have done this, and it's really fabulous when it's done right. And I know that uh city of Aberdeen has some infrastructure issues, roads, facilities, things that that we probably could be tackling. I know that um it's a large city council, unusually large, really. Um and I would be one of twelve people and just one vote, but that, again, just brings me back to how important it is to listen and to take all of the different viewpoints and work together collaboratively to find a way forward. I believe everybody who puts the time in to sit on the city council has the best interest of Aberdeen in part, or you wouldn't be here. So it's just a matter of listening and working together. As far as my availability goes, I do work full-time. I do volunteer on a few different committees, but I believe that I have the time necessary to dedicate to city council. I have no conflicts on Wednesday nights. All my Wednesdays are free. I have one out of town trip in September, but um that what I looks like we have online availability, so I could attend virtually. I would make myself available. Um so uh I'm gonna keep mine as short as possible. Uh I just wanna close by saying I'm really here just because I wanna help. I think I have some skills that I can bring to the table, and I'm ready to get to work if you will let me. I wanna thank all of you for giving all of us this opportunity, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future in whatever form that takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Rest your open.
Hi, my name's Russell. Hi, my name's Russell, and uh it's uh like Quigley, only with a V. So uh thanks for that opportunity to speak and to be considered for this position. Um a little about myself, um I have a lot of free time. I sort of semi-retired. So for a while now, I've been thinking about how I could volunteer and contribute, and I've been interested in uh city government for a number of years and considered actually running for a position in the past, but never got around to it. For about two months now, I've been watching the city council meetings on YouTube, and thank you very much for putting those up. I really do appreciate that. Uh everyone along at Catholic Community Services uh told me the position was open. They suggested I apply for it, so obviously, I jumped at the chance, and here I am. I really do care about this community. I'm a team member as much as a team leader, and I work by consensus. I'm not alone. I didn't have any access to grind or anything. In my past, I've worked in the I T industry. I've worked with I T since the I IBM PC came out, and uh I started as a software engineer and moved into leadership positions, and as new things have happened in the industry, I sort of followed that uh from software engineering through systems analysis and system design to cybersecurity, and that pulled me into I T policy and regulatory compliance and governance, and I ended up in I T service management as a service delivery manager. So why do I wanna become a council member? Uh I moved to Aberdeen seven or eight years ago now, uh because I fell in love with the downtown, uh Wishkar and Heron Street. Uh it reminds me a lot of where I grew up as a child. Uh it has it has a nice small-town feel to it, and I love that. So when I drove through the first time, I started coming down every weekend for a few months until I was convinced and I decided I was eventually gonna move here, and I did. So uh I moved right into the middle of Ward Three, which was interesting. I enjoyed it. Uh but about three years ago, I did a Ward Four, and I'm really amazed at the difference between the two wards. Um I was down in flats before and um and some things going on down there. Um anyways, through Ward Three on a daily basis, past the high school, and it really saddened me to see what was going on in the alleyway on S Street. And I've gotta commend you people for being so quick to respond to it. I understand the problem isn't gone, but you know, just a few few minutes in here, and it made a dramatic difference, and uh thank you. So if we look at my major concerns, I think they're probably about the same as everybody else's here. Now crimes, drugs, and homelessness is a concern. Uh for four years now, every weekend, my roommate and I go down to Billy's, eat breakfast at Billy's. And we sit and we watch out the window, and we see homeless people struggling as they walk around to Salvation Army and all of that, and we're just sort of moving around town. We see people camping in doorways on the way down, and that's sad. They're out in the weather and everything. Um we see people uh talking and shouting at the sky and waving their arm and scaring anybody within twenty hours of they've got any drug issues. And you know, one of the things we've always done is wonder what their life stories are, how they ended up outside society. Uh I think it just takes a few poor decisions. Uh drugs and alcohol, uh pretty soon their money disappears. They end up with no safe place to stay, and they're faced with hard decisions like crime, homelessness, you know, withdrawals from drugs and even starations. Um I wish I knew how to solve all these things. I don't. I have ideas, but I, you know, lots of great people have tried, and it's it's not an easy thing to solve. But what I do wanna see is I I I wanna do what I can to make sure that more people don't move into this life. Uh so one way, march down very bad paths. The other big thing I'm concerned about is revitalizing Aberdeen's downtown. There are way too many empty storefronts. And that's not good for the city. Uh we have rundown and abandoned buildings and lots, and these are attracting the wrong kinds of elements. I feel like we've got a lot of investors holding buildings and not doing anything with them. These buildings are literally rotting. Uh new paint and keeping the facades up is great, but it's not enough. I wanna be a part of trying to find out what factors are driving these kinds of additions for us and what we can do to make a better environment for businesses to come in. I don't know if it's true, but I was talking to somebody in the insurance industry uh close to a year ago, and they're saying that it's almost impossible to get new business insurance here now. I that there are issues like that potentially, that, you know, maybe there are things that can be done about that. So um you know, I wanna see us drawing in business and more jobs uh to make Aberdeen the place that I love, more like what I remember as a kid, and uh just eat every uh wonderful place that it is. So I'd like to thank you guys for considering me, and uh thank you through the vote, if I get a vote, so.
And Charles. And now our last person, Les.
Okay, um excuse me. I know you all see me regularly, so um what you may not know about me is that for twenty-four years, part of my job description was to keep track of the council, the mayor, and what the city was doing. Because of my background, working for the historical seaport, I have experience in developing and managing complex projects and million-dollar budgets. I know intimately all five miles of shoreline that we have inside of city limits. Um I'm semi-retired, so I can control my my time. I have plenty of time to work on the council, and my experience in working with the city from the historical seaport perspective has been mixed. At one point in time, we acquired a um, we were evicted by the port, and we acquired a one hundred and we acquired a one-hundred-and, uh, two-hundred-and-ninety-four-acre industrial property in Junction City. It was an EPA Priority One cleanup site. It had an eleven-thousand-square-foot building that was heavily vandalized, and we wanted to build an education center there. We were able to pull together thirty-two partners to help make that happen, and the greatest partner that we had was the City of Aberdeen. Specifically, Director Scott, who stepped up in a leadership position and convinced state agencies and federal agencies that, yeah, you can work with the seaport. And we went. She stepped in, she helped us get credibility, she helped us if we stumbled along the way. But she, once we got in, she stepped back and allowed our organization to move forward and tap into our resources, and we were able to take it forward. And I think that that's one of the things that the city could do more of. We don't need, the city doesn't need to, to be the one in charge every time. But we can get a lot more bang for our buck if we figure out what is it that we all agree on? Let's, let's bring together the stakeholders. Let's figure out what that vision is. How, where do we wanna go? And then a stakeholder, someone like Emmert, he didn't buy those properties because he wants to lose money. He wants to make money. If we share a vision with him, and he can say, you know, I, I'm not gonna build that, or that, or that, but I can make my buildings kind of comply with your vision. How about that? You know, then, then our city staff can maybe come in and, and help facilitate that conversation. Maybe, you know, make sure that we, we line up projects. I love hearing that the city, or that the uh, school district has got these big projects coming, and they're lining them up, and they're looking at them on a multi-year basis, and that's something that this city has not done in the thirty-five years that I've been watching. This city has never had a vision for what do we wanna be? What do we want our community to look like out there in the future? If we know where we're going, we can make sure that every step that we make gets us one step closer. And I think that that's something that, you know, the school district is a partner. Bray Harbor College is a potential partner. There's a lot of things that we can do in this community. We just need to work with our partners. Um, talking about the, the council's role, um, the city council, individual council members, you are a line of communication between your ward and the, and the city, you know? Constituents, they have a concern, they can come to you and talk about that. As, as a council, your, your job is to provide oversight and make sure that city staff is doing things that um, support the city's mission, and that they're spending money responsibly. But the one thing that I don't think that council has done in the past, that I would love to see this council do, is figure out that plan. Take some time over the next two to three years and pull in those community stakeholders, and let's figure out what, where the heck we're going with this city.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's worth noting, and maybe I should have done it before you've spent your time. Um, this position is appointed. It expires in December, so whoever is appointed into it and accepts the office will be sworn in through December to maintain the position, or for anyone interested in running for any of our open positions, you'll have to file in May to continue on beyond that.
Thank you. All right, uh, looks like we're going into executive session now. I'll give you questions first. Okay, who wants to be first? We'll start.
Um, okay. It's not a super detailed oriented question. I'm probably not gonna be very popular, but we've talked to all of you guys, and thank you for applying, all your applications and your statements were all of, very blessed to have such a big group of impressive individuals. Um, we've talked a lot about collaboration. Um, what I wanted to ask you guys was, being on the council, obviously you're one of twelve. Consensus building and collaboration are crucial to accomplishing forward momentum for the city. But what I wanna know, if there was something coming before the council that you opposed on principle or from feedback from your constituents, would you have the courage to stand up and just vote no, or try to convince the others of your position? I know it's, it's hard, you know, being in the minority opinion on something, and not everybody has the courage to stand up and say, hey, maybe this isn't right. Maybe we need to rethink this. Would you have the courage to do that?
Karen, you wanna go first?
Hey, you asked a tough question right off the bat. I think we're not here for our personal opinions. We're here to represent Ward Four. Um, so I'm just gonna leave ahead to the part where my constituents are telling me this is not acceptable to us. I think in that case, I'm honor-bound to stand up and say, I've heard from people in Ward Four, and this is overwhelmingly what I'm hearing, and so I'm duty-bound to vote no on this, or yes on this, depending on what the comments.
Yeah, thank you. I, not to be a copycat, but the same thing, you represent the people in your ward and in your city, and you have to go back on, having run for city council and been serving in the community and on the Civil Service Commission, I've talked to people about issues, and you have to think back on what have people asked you to do. And I think following your, I, I feel that integrity is important. You have to, you know, maze right around the corner, and so whoever gets um, appointed tonight is gonna have to quickly put their feet on the ground and start talking to people, and listen to what people are saying they want the city to do. And so, yes, have integrity, follow your convictions, listen to what people are saying they want. I can tell you that about nine out of ten people had very strong opinions about what was going on with the city, and um, the council has managed that very well, and the state has helped with some of the legislative decisions that they've made that have helped get that camp closed and get people into housing, and the city made a really good decision to hire an administrator to help us do that. Um, but yeah, we have to listen, and we have to follow, and just do the right thing. Have integrity now.
Norman?
Thank you. I'm, if I were on the council, I believe I'd want to send a letter out to everybody in the ward so I could get the feeling of where, what they were thinking of. So I would know when there was uh, something to be voted on, what they were thinking of. And then I would have to vote the way they want me to.
Look, I wasn't that no, but thank you.
I, in my career, I've had to say no a lot of times, uh, sometimes very important and uh, um, expensive things. Um, but it really does come down to what everybody else has said. We're representative of our constituents, and if, you know, if we get a clear message from the constituents that say no or yes to something, whether I agree with it or not, it's really my job to say yes or no, if, if necessary, even if everyone else disagrees.
Thanks.
I don't think anybody here thinks that I wouldn't express myself, but, but, but I wanna be clear that I may vote no, and I may disagree with you strongly, but once the vote happens, that's it. And, and I will back the action of the council a hundred percent. I mean, that's the way this body works.
Thank you. Yes, you're up, Norman.
Um, so being on city council, you get a lot of uh, feedback. You get a lot of, you're not gonna please everybody. And, and one side, you're gonna make them cheer for you. This side's like, oh, we hate it, and let's, you know, hang him outside. Um, I mean, and, and it's back and forth, but what is your, I wanna know what your idea is of what you get out of city council? What do you get out of being on city council? I mean, personally, what do you get out of it?
You're up, perspex.
Oh, um. I like creating things. I like learning new things. I like creating things. I like working together with people to solve problems. And really, that's what council's all about. So, it's kind of a dream job.
Yeah, what do, what do I get out of uh, this? Well, I've, I've been doing consensus building all, all of my life professionally. I, I've always been managing product, uh, projects or developing products and stuff, and I, I like to build things. I get a lot of gratification from that, but more than that, believe it or not, I'm really excited because I think I really enjoy this job. I, it makes me happy because um, being a part of something that you can look at and be proud of, uh, you lose that in, in, in a lot of uh, professions, and uh, you know, I've, I've had some uh, positions where I literally was having to slash budgets by tens of millions of dollars for people, and um, I was doing a good thing, but wasn't really well appreciated for it. And, and this, this excites me a lot. Uh, this would make me happy. Uh, and I'm not always a happy person, so.
Okay, thanks, Russ. Norman?
Well, in the time that I've been here in Aberdeen, I've noticed a, a big improvement in the downtown area, in the homeless problem, and a lot of things. And I'd like to be a part of it. That's what I would get out of it, the satisfaction of seeing growth and improvement.
Thank you. Karen?
Yeah, um, I was raised on the ideals of giving community service, and when I was a teen, I had the opportunity to go and help build and paint houses for Habitat for Humanity in Houston, where my family lived when I was in high school. And I feel about something that um, I can continue, can continue as an adult in this capacity in our area. Um, I think that we're happy when we give back to our communities, and so that's how I can do that here in Aberdeen, and it's um, something that I've been invested in for a long time here. You know, since at least twenty nineteen. The reason I did it is I was picking my daughter up from the bus stop at Sixth and Broadway one day, and I saw needles in the gutter, and I thought this problem's just growing, and I've seen how it's affected my kids' friends and kids they go to school with, and how um, it affects our lives, and we need, we need to keep invested in our youth because they are tomorrow's future, and so that's why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Thank you. Karen?
I don't know if you guys have heard the term helium hand. Kind of, my thing is, I like to dive in. I like to tackle a task. I get a sense of achievement from taking something and seeing it through to the end, and that's always what drives me. When I said I was results-driven, that's my thing. And the more complicated the task, the more I get that sense of achievement when it's done, and so um, it's one of the things that's made me a good administrator for so long, is I just, I really get a charge out of taking anything, diving into it, finding solutions, and solving it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna make it easy.
Um, okay, Karen, I'll personally.
Thank you. Um, you all have come with very strong resumes and experience and talent. But as council, it, as council members, we're here to represent our ward and to make use of those, the history, the experience that we bring um, so that we can work effectively with each other and with a very talented city staff who's got the boots on the ground doing the work that, that really needs to get done. Um, so I guess my, my question is maybe two-part. One is, and Norma, you touched on this a little bit. How would you reach out and make yourself available to the people in your ward so that um, you did have a good finger on the pulse, as well as they knew how to reach you? And and um, how would you use all of your skills and talents to work effectively with city staff?
Karen, you wanna go first?
I'm gonna have to. And something I did when I ran for council, I felt very strongly about not spending a ton of money to get elected. And so I used social media, and I told people, here's my cell phone number, here's my email, and you can contact me on Facebook, or text me, or call me. And then I went through and met people after school at, at pickup and said, hey, I'm running for city council. What are your concerns? And just made contact with people. And people did contact me, and I spent very little money, because I feel like being fiscally conservative um, and saving money where we can is important. And so, yeah, being available, being responsive, and letting people know, I am here for you, and I will respond when you have a concern, and when you have things that you want to be done. If I don't have the answers, I'll go talk to the, whoever at City Hall takes care of that issue, and we have great responsive people over there. You're right. You know, so does that answer your question? Think, yeah? It was a two-part question. I forgot what the other part was.
Well, you, I think you did pretty good.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Karen, you can go next.
Yeah, perfect, because I'm gonna, I'll be you. Um, I was gonna say, Social Media Tube as well. Um, also, uh, I'm a big believer, and I don't know if you guys have heard of Linktree, but it's a, you know, one website where you can put all of your information, and you can give out a QR code to people, and so I would probably have parts printed out that I could give to people, go, here's all my contact information, here's how you can find me on Facebook and Instagram and all of the things, and um, and then I, I would build on the networks I already have with the groups that I am volunteering with or part of. Um, I already have, you know, quite a few relationships I've worked for, as I'm sure we all do, because we all live there.
Yeah.
Um, and so you just kind of build on that and, and build your network so that people know they can come to you.
That's normal.
Well, as I said before, I think I'd probably like to write a letter and just give everyone my contact information and, you know, kind of introduce myself and ask them, maybe I could even direct, direct their, their answers to whatever issues are coming before the council. But now, I'm, I'm begun letter-writing, and that's what I do.
Old school.
Yeah.
At brass.
So, all, all these sound like really good ideas, but I'm gonna give you the crazy one now. Um, when I was a young teenager, um, I did political canvassing for the Den, uh, Democratic Party, and I canvassed more than half of the, the homes in the city of Salem, Oregon, and in addition to these things, I actually, if, if it's acceptable, I'm gonna talk to all of these people, but I wanna talk to everybody in the ward face-to-face if I can. Um, when I was in Portland, I had a um, uh, state legislator show up at my door, and we talked for about twenty minutes, and he got my vote because of it. And uh, I'd like to be able to do the same thing. That really impressed me, and I think that's something I wanna do. I mean, it's a ward. It's, there's twenty-three-hundred people, twenty-three ninety-eight or something like that, and I don't remember, but um, it's not an impossible task. You know, get out there on the streets, see what the ward looks like, drive through it every day, might as well be a part of it.
Thank you. Les?
What they said. Certainly, um, you know, there's a lot of people that already have my business card. My wife and I, we, we walk in the ward all the time. Um, you know, I, I do like the idea of, of, you know, going up and, and knocking door-to-door, but something that we used to do, that we did years ago, that I think that we should do again, is we partnered up with the school district, and we had ward listening sessions, and we invited all the people in the ward, and we sent out notices in the utility bill. And if you're in Ward Three, there's gonna be two listening sessions, and there's gonna be one on this date, and there's gonna be one on this date. And it was an opportunity to meet and greet your council members, and for the, the whole voice of the ward to speak and, and learn about things that were happening in the ward. And there were city staff that were there. I mean, I thought it was, I thought it was really nicely done, and, and something that could benefit everybody.
Okay, now we're on ten, ten councilperson objects.
Yeah, well, you're the usual group of really awesome fourth ward people. Um when I ran for my seat, no one ran against me and I was totally shocked. Because usually there was five people just like you guys, um running for Ward Four that were all really excellent choices. And so every single one of you have a right to sit on this council. And I wish we could take every single one of you, because you are all awesome. Um one of the things that I talked to Stan about doing um when we started working together was we had the driving school that's on Broadway. It's in, you know, right by us. And I said, we could meet once a month with ward members, you know, on a Sunday afternoon. And people could just stop by and share concerns with us. Um one of the things that I've been concerned about that specifically deals with Fourth Ward is um we're gonna be rezoning. And Fourth Ward is possibly gonna be rezoned where between, I think, Third Street, Tenth Street, we could have multi, you know, um dwellings, you know, where there's multiple people living in that home. And the cheapest way, of course, to get more housing. We can't get anybody to come here and build an apartment complex for us. And we definitely need more housing. So one of the easiest ways to get more housing here is to flip and to make a single-family dwelling into a multiple-family dwelling. My concern is always parking, because you've all driven down Fifth Street and you know what the parking's like on Fifth Street where there's multi dwelling, you know, units. Um and it just becomes a parking lot and really hard to travel. So I've had some concerns about that and just and you know, what, just take a minute to um share with me how you feel about multi um dwellings in our historical neighborhood between Third and Tenth.
Norma, you're first.
I think it's a great idea, that parking. Yes, that might be a problem. Some of the streets are pretty jammed up, especially Fifth. I don't know Fifth. But I think it's a great idea to have multi.
Okay. Karen?
I'm wondering why we didn't do that all over Ward One, Two, Three, Four, Five and Six in Aberdeen. Why just Ward Four from Third to Tenth? First of all, I drive down Fifth Street every day and I often have to pull over and wait for the person. And we're, people are usually friendly and we wave and smile and, and most of those places actually aren't multifamily dwelling units. They're just people that don't have garages or places to park off the street right now, or they have more than one car and they share a driveway with the person next door. Les's neighbor, they share their driveway. Um I was told when they were looking at doing that, I'm not even having the time to answer this question, but the state was making us doing it, I think was an answer that I was given about why that was being done. So and the city council voted to approve that. I don't know. I hope. There are places downtown that are empty lots that used to be uh car sales lots that we could put apartments on if we could get somebody to come and do that. And if we get the levy put in, maybe we can eventually do that. But um I believe we need to preserve the historic integrity of our town. And we've got historic homes in that neighborhood that we've got a beautiful fold-out for people to walk the area and look at those historic homes. And so that's something that if I was on the council, I would have said, hey, wait a minute, we need to really evaluate that. But I wasn't on the council. So we do need more housing here.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah.
Carrie, you're up.
I, it's, as we've seen just from the couple answers before, it's a, it's a complicated issue. And there's a lot of different viewpoints on it. Um I think that we do have a shortage of housing and it needs to be addressed. And maybe at some point we can, you know, find lots that somebody wants to build an apartment complex on. But we have to work with what we have. And what we have are some buildings that could be turned into more multifamily. Um and is it ideal? Probably not. Is parking gonna be a problem? Of course. But sometimes you have to take what's in front of you and, and make the best of it. And I think this is one of those cases.
Thank you. Uh Les?
Yeah, um I live on Fifth Street. I actually kind of enjoy pulling over and waiting for the other guy and waving when you have them pass. And, and honestly, it slows the traffic down, which, which is a good thing. Because that's a major connector between the Broadway Hill and cutting down onto, uh was it Sems- Sumner? Sems, anyway. Um but we've what we have right now exists, and that's that. We have some new ordinances that were passed. And if you're going to do a multifamily home, you have to provide off-street parking. And I think that's completely appropriate. And my wife and I, we bought a house because the price was right. And the house is huge. I mean, it's over four thousand square feet. So how many two-fen- you know, mom, dad and one child need a four thousand square foot home? I, I love our home. And I, and I like keeping it a, a single-family dwelling. But I think that for someone who has purchased a property that's got, you know, three thousand to five thousand square feet, as long as they comply with what the regulations are, I, I think that's reasonable.
Thanks. Sorry. That's what, uh Russ?
Well, that's an interesting question. And um so there, there's, I, I'm not really for it, but doesn't really matter what I want. If the constituents are for it, then that's what we need to do. Housing is a huge problem. And you know, it's driving up red pricing as if there's nothing available. When I moved down here, it was a nightmare finding a place. So in, for the greater good, I'd say I, I would support it. But to be honest, I'm not excited about it. It makes me sad to see these big, beautiful homes probably like yours, um being divided up and people moving in and there being lots of cars and things. And it's not the best, you know, if we had billions of dollars and could do anything they wanted, it's not the best solution. But it's a solution and um it's something I think we need to probably live with. But I'm not a fan.
Oh, thank you. I'm not a fan either, but we're outgunning probably.
Yeah, okay. Uh Councilperson, Parachin.
And my question's pretty simple. Um I know when I was running for my seat for probably three years, I attended almost every single council meeting and watched how everything was operated and had to really think about, you know, do I want to run for this position? Um how important do you think it is and to attend all the council meetings all the time? And like, say you don't get on tonight, will you be coming to the next council meeting? Do you think that's an important thing?
This one goes to Russ first.
Yes. Uh yeah, it's, it's very important. Um you know, I've been, like I said, I've been, I started watching the city council meetings on YouTube as soon as I found out they were there. It took years to discover it, but I finally did. Um yeah, absolutely. Um you know, this is, this is the core of participation. You know, we have our official board and everything and it's all fairly formal up here, but um things don't get done if people aren't facing this level. So absolutely, yes.
Les, your opinion?
I'll be here.
Carrie, your next.
Oh, um well, like Russ, I have been watching them, um the city council meetings on YouTube. Um I, I've been considering the city council for probably a couple of years. And so I've been kind of watching and kind of learning, seeing what, what goes on. Um and whether I am on the council after tonight or not, um I've already been working on the design and economic mentality committee that I'm still learning how to say. And um so yes, I probably would be here more often and be trying to find more ways to get my hands in and, and get some things going regardless.
Um well, that's the great thing about it being available on Teams. Um whether we're here or we're watching it on Teams and being able to read the notes, we can stay abreast of what's going on. Um Wednesday nights, I am available to be here at council. And from the time that I ran for council the first time until now, my children have grown a little bit. Three of them are over eighteen and my youngest is eight. And so they're pretty self-sufficient on Wednesday nights. Um I have kids can, that can be home with one another and, and my husband's available to be home with them most often. So um being available is a lot easier now than it was several years ago. So yeah. Um but yeah, I do stay abreast of what's going on and, and can be here. And um if I file and made a run for the seat, uh then yeah, I will be here. And if I'm appointed, I'll definitely be up there.
Thanks. Norma?
Yes, I watch it on YouTube too. Too lazy. That's a long walk from the parking lot. Yes, I, I love YouTube and I'm glad it's there so I can keep up with what's going on. And if, if I were appointed, I would make that long walk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Russ?
Yes, or still yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks. All right. Next, the councilperson, Prince.
I'm filling in right now. Uh so I appreciate all of you guys putting in your applications and you want to assume that you've read the United States Constitution, the Bill of Rights and Washington State Constitution and Bill of Rights. But a two-part question about that, which is long. And the second part is, do you have any strong feel- feelings about our founding principles?
Let's, let's start with Carrie Tara.
Joshua, that's, that's the toughest question of the night, buddy. I haven't read either one of those in a while, but I do have strong feelings about them. And uh they are the founding documents of our country and need to be preserved and defended. Um do we deal with those documents on, uh you know, one weekly, bi-weekly basis when we're here at council? I don't think we do, but we do need to uphold those things. And they're the lodestar, right, of our country. Yeah, maybe we need to have like a fifth, uh Wednesday night reading of those documents. What do you say?
Common sense of it.
Yeah, I agree. Great question. But yeah, no, those are, that is why we are here and why we have this democratic process. And we are the legislative body, right? That's, that's why we even have this process and why we have a say in what happens in our city. And I believe um those guiding documents were divine. And whatever divine power you believe in, that's why we have the ability to, you know, do what we do.
Thanks. Carrie, you're up.
Man, tough question. Um I do not have them memorized, no. I do not know which one is longer. I look at them as reference documents. And so if someone's gonna ask me a question about either Constitution or the Bill of Rights, I'm gonna say, let me look at those documents and get back to you. Because I don't trust my brain to memorize all of that. I own them. Uh I have them. I, actually, the Bill of Rights is sitting on my dining table right now. Um and yes, they are very important to me. I think they should be very important to anybody who lives in this country. Uh but no, I don't, I don't know which one's longer.
Les?
No. Um I strongly, those are foundational documents. I don't know which one's longer. Oh, well, actually, oh, the uh yeah, Declaration of Independence is shorter, for sure. And um but those are the founding documents that everything is based on. And, and I think they're critically important in this room. Um I mean, I don't, if you asked me what the Seventeenth Amendment is, I couldn't tell you. Okay, but but those documents, that's the integrity of what we do. And, and it's, it's critically important that everybody has the right to speak, even if I don't agree with them. And, you know, we, we have an obligation to deal with all people fairly, regardless of how much they aggravate us. And, and so, you know.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Russ, you're up.
All right, another long answer. Um so the Constitution of the United States versus the Constitution of the State of Washington. All right, with or without the amendments?
I don't know, with the, with the amendments. Okay, that changes the answer.
Um I think actually the US Constitution and the amendments might be slightly longer than the Washington one. But in general, that the other way around, because usually state constitutions are longer. I have to confess, I haven't read Washington's um Constitution. I have read Oregon's as well as the Oregon by statute. But I will turn around and I will read the Washington Constitution and all of our local uh codes. But I have not done that yet. But I think formally, I'd have to say the Washington Constitution is longer.
Thanks. Norma, you're up, Tim.
I'm gonna go right home and read the Washington State Constitution.
Thank you. All right, then, Council President, Flori.
So oftentimes we hear about the same three things as core issues, as why you would want to serve on the council or why you would want to get involved. Whether it's homelessness and housing, downtown revitalization, or just general public safety. Outside of those three things, what is the one thing that makes you want to sit up here?
Carrie, you're first.
I'm gonna give you a dead giveaway. I live on Canyon Court. So um I don't know if you guys have seen what is happening to that waterway on Canyon Court, but it is slipping more and more every day. And my neighbors and I, we walk after work. And as we're walking, we're watching daily changes in that infrastructure. And everyone in that neighborhood is telling me our houses, this street's gonna collapse. Our houses are gonna be toast if something doesn't happen. And um I just recently had my sidewalk redone. And while they were doing that, the city engineers got a really good look at what's going on in there. And I think there's a lot of discussion going on about that. So I think, I think there are some things in motion that we haven't been told yet. But if there's a pet project, that one's gonna be mine.
Um I would say economic development. Um we learned last week that the bowling alley is probably gonna close in Aberdeen. He's keeping the one open in Ocean Shores and the extreme fund center is gone. And what else do we do in Aberdeen? Put our families on the weekend fund. I'm really sad about that. So yeah, that's, that's a big concern of mine. And I hope we can have some meetings about what can we do to get, get stuff here. I'm really concerned about that. Because people are leaving and going. They go to Ocean Shores to go to, they go to Olympia. And that's a tax revenue we're losing. So yeah, she's amazing.
There are a lot of issues for Aberdeen, but everything takes time. And as I said before, I've seen progress. I, I think my favorite project that I've heard of is that levee. I still think that'd be great to focus on and expand on and you know, if you can bring more people here and spend more money here, there'd be more money to do more things here. So that's why I'm kind of focused on big, big projects.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
So is, is that the last slide over by, um Bel Air?
No, this is, um I think there's a, there's a waterway, a, a big open pocket.
Well, both of those things seem, seem important to me, to be honest. Um uh and the levee obviously is very important. And um we won't survive without it eventually. But um you know, what's kind of close to my heart is we've got the Pulse Museum next door to us. And we've got, you know, there's a little museum even in Westport. Um we've lost our museum. And I know, I know the people are still active, but I personally, I'd kind of like to see something like that come back. Um all these other things are very important. And um you know, I don't, I don't want to downplay it, but my own personal thing is I would like to see us have more of ours than that. Because a lot of them went up and smoked a few years ago, I guess. And uh I miss not having things like that. So.
Thanks. I miss it too. Uh Les, you're up.
I like this guy. Honestly, I'm not sure I know enough. Um I'm a, I'm a strategic planner. And one of the first things you do for a strategic plan is you really dig down and figure out where are you? What are your resources? What are your assets? What are your liabilities? Canyon Court, I mean, I walked by there and I didn't realize that's a problem. But I will, I will take a look. But you know, it's so easy to get distracted because you've got this little pet project. And uh you know, I would love to see us, you know, what are the big issues in? And, uh, you know, I would love to see us, you know, what are the big issues in Ward Four? What are the big issues in Ward Five? What are the big issues in Ward One? Let's, I mean, let's really do an analysis and find out what's the stuff that's really gonna hurt us, that's really gonna cause us a problem? And then develop a story around that, and then go and get it funded.
Thanks.
Sorry.
All right, so that's, uh, can you ever close it for the questions now? So.
I move to recess into executive session for up to fifteen minutes. The purpose of the executive session is pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. However, any interview of such candidate and final action appointing a candidate to elective office shall be in a meeting open to the public.
Very much. First and second, any discussion? Nope. All right, all in favor?
Right.
Oppose? All right, we'll be back in fifteen minutes, corner after eight.
I know, I know my face is, and as soon as I get a prayer, I'm gonna say something very special. My next to my chair just, just a different, very cool.
You're on, Phil.
Survey nature.
Tyler's truck.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hendrick's business.
In chat.
To our things.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, I twisted around. I was sitting back there thinking, you know, that, that church. Done doing that, I, I just, I just, it worked out, no problem.
Just for myself. If I look at, I've paid attention to things like, oh, have I right now? It doesn't really make sense what they're saying.
We look at Sharon. Oh, well, good.
So Hendrick's period.
I, that was in the, I was thinking of us. He's on trips though, right? They all live within a block. I, I have the five. Live on Canyon, I live on.
That's the brain trust.
That's it.
Motion to reconvene.
Is there a first and second to reconvene? Is there any discussion? Excuse me, guys. First and second is reconvene. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Oppose? Okay, we're back. All right, so I'm totally unsure as to how to move forward, so. I think we do nomination.
Do we nomination?
Do we do? Is that what we're gonna do, the nomination?
Yes. So if we have a councilwoman that wants to nominate one of our candidates, then we'll take whoever's nominated, we'll do a roll call vote. And if there's more than two, we'll whittle it down to the final two, and then we'll take the final vote from that.
There you go.
I would like to nominate Tara Merritt.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? No? All in favor, Tara Merritt?
Um, wait.
Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Carrie Hubbard, second.
I'll nominate Les Wolf.
Oh, but who's the last one? I didn't even get it written.
Let's.
That's, no, I got last.
Carrie. I heard there are Carrie ones.
Okay. Any more? Done? Okay. So it's between, uh, Tara, Carrie, and Les right now?
So we'll do a roll call vote. Please state the name of the candidate you are voting for.
Ellis.
Carrie.
Francie.
Bolton.
Jake, it, it, just, Hodgkin.
Barrett.
Morrison.
Merritt.
Baricini.
Bolton.
Credo.
Carrie.
Swor.
Carrie Hubbard.
Taylor.
Merritt.
We have a tie between Hubbard and Merritt, so we will vote a second, and you'll have your choice between the two, Hubbard or Merritt. Ellis.
Hubbard.
Francie.
Burton.
Hodgkin.
Merritt.
Morrison.
Merritt.
Baricini.
Merritt.
Credo.
Hubbard.
Swor.
Hubbard.
Taylor.
Merritt.
That's a tie four to four. Mr. Mayor. We'll just do it together.
Alternate Wednesdays.
All right. I feel terrible about Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations, Carrie. Thank you all. Well, we have council, uh, it's coming up here. We have pretty this, uh, winter so you guys can run again. All of this. Okay? Thanks. Thanks for the application then. Does Carrie get sworn in for the next meeting?
Yep, on the ninth.
On the ninth.
Okay. Thanks. All right. All right. Now we're gonna move on to a public comment period. So only cut public comment because we have so much going on today. So please keep your comments to three minutes and start off with your name and your board or your address.
I'm Jerry Saltzman from Ward One. And as the council, and we talked about all of these issues that you have to deal with. One of them though that you're dealing with and discussing and you're facing deadlines for is to reopen our Aberdeen Museum. And I'd like to update you on the progress we're making with our youth in the community and how they're involved with the museum. Connecting our kids with the community and our community to our kids is probably now more important than it's ever been. The museum archives were critical in planning our Miller Junior High Centennial last year. But even more important is the connection that was made between our students and the community members they got to know as they planned the event. That led to Miller students participating last summer as grand marshal escorts in the Founder's Day Parade, followed by participation in World Music Day, Rain Glow and Walk of the Undead. And last fall, high school freshman Cotton Gilkeith became the youngest board member in the history of the Aberdeen Museum. We now have several students at Aberdeen High School doing their community service. And four students are doing their senior projects at the museum office or the warehouse. At the Art Center's first Friday event this month, we had three freshmen start their community service by being ambassadors. And they actually increased the number of visitors to the museum by going throughout the Art Center, handing out information about the museum, and then asking the people to sign the guest list as they came to the museum to visit. In addition to their community service, students are also forming a museum club at Aberdeen High School. And they've named it the Past, Present, Future Club. They decided the purpose of the club is, and I quote, "To attain knowledge of Graves Harbor's past to help inform today and provide a better future for us and the community." Their club motto? History for the future. I'm really impressed at how clearly these kids see the value of that connection. I might add here that one of the priorities included in the History 98520 Board Strategic Plan, which we've worked on for a long time now, is to develop a curriculum unit about the history of Aberdeen to include in the seventh grade Washington State History class. Also in the plan are efforts to make our new museum more than just the stereotypical building with old artifacts in it. By the use of technology, we also want to add an interactive exhibits and also take exhibits out to the schools and other community locations. So let me close with this. Just as our city staff, we mentioned in the interviews today, we talked about all the collaboration that really helps us move forward in the city. And the example I came up with, it was in the paper last week. I say, just as the city staff recently used the expertise of a landscape architect to devise a plan for the Market Street sidewalk replacement project, I hope that you will consider using the expertise of a group of community volunteers who have dedicated themselves to maintaining our Aberdeen Museum for over the past forty years.
Thanks.
They have a. They have a vision, a plan and a desire to make the museum a destination attraction for both our citizens and the visitors to our city. So I'd like to ask the board and thank the council and our mayor for your leadership in getting our museum open as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else with comment? Public comment? And? Okay. Sorry. Council person. Or council president's work with consent agenda?
Yes. Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the March 12th meeting and counts payable and payroll, including check numbers 26218 through 26220, 89042 through 89182, and wires 1845 through 1847 and 1850 through 1851.
Second? First and second. Is there any discussion? Being mad? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? All right. Passes? Um. I really don't have a mayor's report other than clean and green Aberdeen. It's, uh, not my idea, but it's somebody else's. And I think it's a wonderful idea for us to all push on our young people. Force it on them. Clean and green Aberdeen. If you see a little piece of litter, even if it's not yours, pick it up. If it's real big, then kick it on the curb. No. Kick. Try and pick it up. And. And. And then just encourage your friends and stuff to do the same thing. And it's just an attitude. And in our little community, I noticed that we don't have this public shaming that you have. Like if you're in LA area and you walk your dog and it doesn't. Nobody picks up the poo. It's like everybody shamed you and you feel horrible. And here they kind of just look the other way. So I mean, it's something. It's just one little thing, but those little things make a huge difference in community pride. So clean and green Aberdeen. I love that phrase. All right. Um. Do we have any council reports?
Okay. Sure.
Okay.
I just wanna say thank you to Teresa Allen for helping clean up the campus ruse on Sunday.
Good.
She break the weather and helped do that.
That's my slogan. That's. That was his slogan. Clean and green Aberdeen. I love it.
And they started using it. Aberdeen's.
Okay.
But.
They probably do. They've got more problems than us if you could believe that.
Any other council reports? Yeah. Okay. Director reports or hold it. Administrator. First.
Thank you, Mayor. We are preparing for the Economic Development Strategy Workshop on April 16th. That's just a friendly reminder to all of you that it's. Love to hear your feedback and love for you to participate in creating Aberdeen's future and the direction that you would love, like staff and I, to head in the realm of economic development for the next two years. Governor Ferguson was in Aberdeen last week or the week before, pardon me, on Friday. We were able to talk about economic development permitting process as it currently stands with the state and housing shortage. So we were able to talk to him a little bit about that collectively. All. I believe it was just the whole city of Hopeview and Aberdeen that were invited. But we had Summit Pacific that was also there, the port. We had a lot of key economic players that were present for that. And then the next week, Representative Congressional Representative Emily Randall was visited Aberdeen as well at Greater Graves Harbor. And we were able to talk about our levy project and just the concerns that we have at the federal level about the security of the funding that we have for our levy project. So she was. She heard our concerns and we were able to kind of hear her concerns as well. We then gave her a tour of the Nirvana, the Kurt Cobain Tribute Galleries. We wanted to show her what economic revitalization is looking like in Aberdeen and how the levy project would only encourage more investment in our, especially into our downtown core. And then we gave her a tour of the Fry Creek Pump Station, thanks to Director Rick Sanger and City Engineer Nick Bird, who were there on hand to give her a tour of that. We started public safety campus discussions this week. We met with the city of Airway Heights, who is currently going through building a public safety campus, which would include their city hall, their police station and their fire station. We want to learn about their process next week. Or I believe later this week, we meet with the city of Snohomish, who is also constructing a public safety campus as well. We are also looking at operational models for the museum. We spoke with the city of Renton, who has a city-owned and operated museum and some of the successes and challenges that they face. And next week or in a couple of weeks, we will meet with the city of Auburn to discuss. They also are another city that has a museum. We want to learn how these cities are making the operations of a museum pencil out for them. And we also met with executive, the new executive director for the Pacific Salish Economic Development District, which the, our county, Graves Harbor County, Mason County, Thurston County and Pacific County belong to. And so they, and Annette Roth is the new executive director's name. And she was interested in kind of learning what Aberdeen's goals are. I explained to her that we would be meeting with all of you to have an economic development strategy session and that I would have more answers for her after that. And so that would give us good direction, not only operationally here at the city level, but it will also give those at the regional level an idea of what Aberdeen's vision for the future is, especially when it comes to economic development. Lastly, we will be attending a dinner hosted by Greater Graves Harbor. It's a legislative dinner. We'll be meeting with different legislators. And at the forefront of our priorities is to discuss funding for the rail separation project. The budget for the House and Senate was recently released. And while the Senate budget included funding for the rail separation project, the House budget did not include that. We sent a letter and CC, BCC'd all of you in that email to legislators to encourage them to align the budgets so that they included the rail separation project. And we will be further discussing that with them at tomorrow's dinner. Are there any questions on my report? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our meeting time is up. We can be in this facility for another thirty minutes, but not beyond that. So if we want to continue our agenda, we need a motion to extend the meeting.
A motion to extend the meeting until nine P M. Captain.
Uh. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay. Meaning will be extended till nine. Um. All right. Thanks. Do we have any other reports? Director. Was that squeaky toy? I heard somebody step on that.
No. My ankle kicking the chair.
Thank you. Thank you. So tonight, we're gonna kind of do, I'll make it as quick as humanly possible. We're doing our year-end wrap-up for two thousand twenty-four. You don't normally hear a lot from us. We keep our heads down. We're extremely busy. We do our job and we move on to the next project. So one of the things we are focused on, as I mentioned earlier, are celebrating the victories and taking pride in all of the accomplishments that we've been doing that maybe most people aren't aware of. So first and foremost, these two humans right here, I call them, they are the amazing duo and could not be community development without them. Building official Josh Paget and our code enforcement officer DJ Cox. And they have been phenomenal. And you've been hearing great things about them throughout the community. So I really wanted to give them a shout out and they'll talk a little bit more in depth about some of the things they've done. But community development, for those that don't know, are comprised of four divisions. That's the building division, the code compliance division, the planning division, and the property maintenance division. In the building division, we have two employees. We have the building official and the permit tech and floodplain coordinator. In the code compliance division, we have two employees. We have the code enforcement officer as well as a code compliance specialist. In the planning division, you have me. And then also in the property maintenance division, you have one residential building inspector. And twenty-four was an incredible year for us. And you guys have the staff, so I won't go into great detail on that. But I will add that this year, we had a ton of new building permits, which equated in a hundred and eighty-one new residential units coming online in Aberdeen. And for those of you that have been around for a long time, that was many years. We went without one single new residential development. So we have been making great strides, and I think that's one of the things we really need to celebrate that a lot of people don't know, that they are tucked away. And it's really, it's happening. It's been incredible. One of the things that was new this year was the beef-up of the vacant building program as well as the, and I'm gonna let Josh talk a little bit about that. We created this new vitality project for the abatement program. So I'll let him talk a little bit. Also, in code compliance, we had seven hundred, seven hundred ninety-two public nuisance complaints during two thousand twenty-four. We issued a thousand ninety-seven land use permits and reviews. We also completed the zoning code, which, for those of you that were around for that, most of you were, it was two thousand twenty-one, I believe, or nineteen ninety-nine was the last time we'd had done that. So that was pretty incredible. The property maintenance division was responsible for licensing four hundred and twenty-seven rentals and performing a hundred and twenty inspections on those residential units. That's still going to be a work in progress until we can get some stronger teeth to go after the property owners that aren't on the list. We do the best we can and we work with them. And believe it or not, we do get some really good compliance. So I couldn't do this without this wonderful team. They are phenomenal. And then you saw behind you our revenue for the year that we brought in and just the permits. That does not include Public Works. They are a big supporter of a lot of this. So I wanted to mention that. And Josh, if you want to go ahead and talk a little bit about, just real quickly about your two programs.
Yeah, which I know a lot of you guys with the vacant commercial building program, you guys have seen just the changes in downtown Aberdeen. So we know that's built a lot of communication with these building owners. And what she was talking about with the abatement program, when I took it over from Bill Seedorf when he retired, I created the building revitalization project, which gets licensed general contractors involved where they have the ability to potentially buy these properties from the owner, which then gives the property owner another avenue, rather than the city going after them with letters and liens and recordings. Now they have an option to sell to these, I have a list of nine contractors so far that since I've started this three months ago, I've had two homes sold in three months. One of them, you may have seen on Bench Drive that a car drove into. It is almost, it's a new siding, new windows, new roof. It's happily done. So that's pretty much what I've got.
So I'll let DJ talk a little bit about what he's been working on, and then I'll finish up a little bit with the vacant building program.
So of course, the big hot-ticket item the last year has been doing the cleanup with some of these encampments that are around the area. In the last couple of months, we've really seen in lots of people utilizing a lot more of the park trails lately and a lot more families at the park being outside. And so that's good to see some of that community. I mean, when you think of a community, you think of people walking downtown or seeing your friend on a trail or something like that. So it's nice to see that coming out again. And it's just part of developing the community. I know F Street was a big concern to quite a lot of constituents in the city of Aberdeen. We worked with a lot of the property owners and kind of took out some of the problem children from the area. And we've seen great success working with a lot of the people that do own homes there that kind of felt like, why should we care? A lot of them are starting to clean up and get that area a lot more clean and looking prettier like it should be, especially with the school right down the road. We're seeing onesies and twosies, these packs of fifteen, twenty people down there. We're just not seeing anymore, which is, it's good. It makes us feel confident that we're taking the right steps and the right approach and kind of accomplishing this goal and taking Aberdeen to the right path to the future. So.
Thanks.
Thanks, DJ. And lastly, too, it's been pretty amazing, like I said, I can't say enough about the crew that you have working for you in community development. We're trying to be proactive in our approaches. We've actually taken, having a staff member come in two hours earlier and work with the Public Works crew, and we're actually cleaning downtown again every day. So we're down there, we care, we're working forward. And I think Julie Rajic earlier, when we presented the award, the thing too, that's really important, is that vacant building program. Believe it or not, you may not have seen some of the things you wanted to see, but we've gotten some really great compliance from our building owners. And I am so very appreciative and grateful. We've got a lot of movement. We've got buildings selling, we've got engineering reports coming forward. It's just been an amazing, just amazing collaboration with the building owners. And I look forward to talking with you all in greater detail when we do the economic development workshop, because there's some great, exciting ideas we have specifically for downtown that I think will drive even more development. So if you have any questions, you know where to find us and especially if you dive deep into statistics. So thank you very much. We love to serve you guys in the community and we're here to help.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a report now? Any director reports, any others? Okay, moving on. Request for council action finance with their chair, a council person.
The finance committee requests recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for the American Forest and accept thirty thousand dollar grant.
Is there been a person second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? It passed? Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to public safety with Chairperson Pericini.
Okay, for reports, we have a request recommending the city council approve the purchase of an ambulance in two thousand twenty-six through Braun Northwest in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. And I move that we adopt this report. Second.
There any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right, report accepted.
Next, we have a request recommending the city council authorize to extend the agreement providing emergency police services to the city of Cosmopolis through the end of two thousand twenty-five. And I move that we adopt this report. Second.
There any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? And pass?
Next, we have a request recommending in surplus of police vehicle three eighty-three to the McCleary Police Department. The purchase of a Jeep Cherokee police vehicle from the McCleary Police Department. And the surplus of police vehicle three ninety-four to be sold at auction. And I move that we approve this request. Second.
Is there any discussion on this request? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? Right, you pass?
And next, in ordinances, we have the first reading of bill twenty-five dash zero four. An ordinance expanding the areas prohibiting sitting or lying on a public sidewalk as set forth in AMC twelve dot forty-one dot zero one zero. And I move that we approve this first reading. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of bill twenty-five dash oh four, an ordinance expanding the areas prohibiting sitting or lying on public sidewalks. Is there? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose?
No.
Two, two opposed, this passes. Okay, now we'll move on to public works with Chairperson.
Well, on the interest of time, just.
Thank you, but we like short. Now, is there anything for the good of the order?
Just really quickly, I would just like to throw out that I don't know if you guys are familiar with Association of Washington Cities. They have a small city connector event coming up. I believe it's the first week of April. It'll be in Raymond. This is a great opportunity for you guys to network with other local elected officials. I'll kick out an invite for you guys, because I can't recall the exact date. It's the first week of April, though. Just want to throw that out there.
Thanks. I'd also like to point out that Councilperson Morrison received her advanced leadership certificate, and I haven't printed it, got it printed for her yet, but I will do that. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We need to go into another executive session?
I move to recess into executive session for up to fifteen minutes. Action is not anticipated after the executive session. The purpose of the executive session is pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one ten to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause likelihood of increased price.
Second. All in favor? Oppose? We'll be back in fifteen minutes.
Eight fifty-eight.
Eight fifty-eight. Eight fifty-eight.
Thank you, guys. Everybody have a wonderful night. Thanks for coming. Aberdeen, clean and green.